Welcome, everyone. My name is Susan Nelson and I'm a member of the League of Women Voters of Duluth, as well as a trained and certified League of Women Voters moderator. I have the pleasure of moderating this forum today. On behalf of the League of Women Voters of Duluth, I'd like to welcome everyone here. The League of Women Voters is pleased to present this pre-general election forum for the Duluth City Council at-large seats. Thank you, candidates, for your willingness to serve and to participate in local government and in this event. The League of Women Voters believes that an informed citizenry is the foundation of effective democracy. The League is open to membership for men and women who are interested in nonpartisan civic participation. The League of Women Voters Duluth realizes that creative and innovative policies and practices are forged out of diverse points of view. We believe diverse perspectives are necessary for responsible and representative decision-making. Let us pause to acknowledge our commitment to welcome and facilitate diversity, equity, and inclusion in all aspects of our work. We strive to include people from a mix of abilities and backgrounds in all of our activities. And you're invited to join us. For more information, you can check out our website at www.lwvduluth.org. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan volunteer organization that works at the local, state, and national level to encourage citizens to participate in government. While we, as a League, do study and take stands on issues, we do not endorse or support political parties or candidates. The views expressed at tonight's forum are those of the participating candidates and not those of the League of Women Voters of Duluth. Additionally, LWV's sponsorship of this forum is not a League endorsement of any of the individual candidates participating. Remember to exercise your right to vote in the general election Tuesday, November 7th. At this time, I would like to introduce the candidates for two at-large seats. In alphabetical order, we have candidate Forstman, candidate Nephew, candidate Pacheco, and candidate Yerko. Thank you. Thank you for being here. Our forum will begin with candidates giving a two-minute opening statement, followed by the questioning round. Questions have been vetted by our Voter Services Committee. Candidates were not given the questions in advance. Each candidate will be given up to one and a half minutes in which to provide their response. The questioning round has been set up so that each candidate will be asked questions in a rotating order. The order in which candidates will respond was determined at random, and we will rotate the responses throughout the forum. After the questioning round is completed, then each candidate is allowed a two-minute closing statement. We will begin with an opening statement, two minutes, from candidate Forstman.
Well, thank you, Susan, and Pat, and Lynn, and Miranda, and Jenna, as well as the fine folks at PAC TV for this League of Women Voters forum. I appreciate the opportunity to do this, as always, and share more about the issues and our stances on it. So my name is Eric Forstman, and it's been my honor and privilege to be serving as your city councillor these past five years. During that time, I have tried to tackle many of our most challenging priorities, as well as a variety of things that have come up during my time as a councillor where I thought that situational leadership required us to spend our time and effort on it. And a few of the things that I would point to include helping to increase our police and fire budgets, helping to step in and get the Costco project back on track after they announced they weren't going to be building in town here, helping step in also and make sure that the Memorial Day Parade stayed in Duluth when there was turbulence, and bringing together community, as well as our city administration and other councillors, to work out a deal to secure the future there. I spent considerable time on Spear Mountain, which I am so pleased is in a stable position, has had two years of profitability in a row, but was in a very different place when I started on the council, and then elevating childcare as a community priority amongst other things that I'm sure we're going to talk about today. I was inspired to run for reelection after many folks approached me, whether that be my council colleagues, many of them who asked me to run again, as well as community members, friends, family, and just people that I would run into at the coffee shop or the grocery store, other places, asking that I reconsider my original decision and put my hat back in the ring. And that was helpful for me because the fire in my heart for service has never gone out. I still have a passion that burns as bright as the day that I started in this role in 2018. And it is, at times, challenging to balance all of the different things that comes with being a working parent, as well as having a role in public service, but it's something that matters, it's something that I've enjoyed, that I've spent considerable time and effort doing, and I look forward to a discussion today. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next opening statement comes from candidate Yekel.
Thank you. Thank you all so much. My name is Jenny Yekel, and I am running for Duluth City Council at-large because I want to work together to take care of our community now and into the future. And while some Duluthians are doing fine, we have big opportunities right now to make life better for all of us. I grew up in Duluth. I am a graduate of our public school system. My first job out of college was at Safe Haven, and since then, I have built a career of community service in the nonprofit sector and earned my master's degree in public health. And I have worked in education, human services, and advocacy, and I have tackled issues alongside our community members most impacted. I know how to do a lot on a tight budget, and I know how to make decisions that support healthy, thriving communities. And it was my union job that made it possible for me to move back to Duluth and become a first-time homeowner. And they now live in the Denfeld neighborhood with my partner Chris, our dog, and a few backyard chickens. And we have opportunities right now to build a vibrant city that works for everyone. Historic federal and state funds will provide countless opportunities for the city of Duluth, increase affordable housing, and invest in our shared infrastructure. These are necessary community development projects that will have positive long-term impacts for us as residents and taxpayers, but also as workers and family members. And I am an organizer. I build relationships to create change. My job is to break down barriers between people, their elected officials, and the public decision-making process. And I know that decisions that impact all of us can and should be driven by the community. And I look forward to talking more about our city's priorities with you all today and how I plan to continue serving our community as your city councillor.
Thank you. We'll next move on to candidate Nephew.
Thank you to the League of Women Voters for putting this on today. We really appreciate it, and thanks for your time. So I'm Lynn Marie Nephew. I'm one of the Labor endorsed candidates for Duluth City Council at-large. I came to Duluth in the 1990s to attend UMD. I put myself through college, actually, working at one of the local hotels as a guest service representative. Later, ended up having an internship at Safe Haven Shelter for battered women and was hired on as an advocate working in the court system with domestic violence victims. For the past 20 years, I've built my own small business as a real estate agent. My husband Jim's a Duluth native, and we have four children from middle school into college age. I'm running for Duluth City Council at-large because Duluth's in a housing crisis, and we need a strong and experienced voice on the next council when it comes to housing. The housing crisis, I think, is the biggest issue facing Duluth right now, and I'm uniquely qualified and have some real experience solving this challenge. I've worked in the housing industry for over 20 years, both in my business as a real estate agent and through my nonprofit volunteer experiences. I've served on the boards of Neighborhood Housing Services, One Roof Community Housing, Common Ground Construction, Housing for Inmates, the Duluth Housing and Redevelopment Authority, sat on the Duluth Housing Task Force. And I always say I've done everything from supportive to million-dollar homes and everything in between. I possess knowledge and invaluable experience where I could be an effective city councillor on this issue from day one. From the rising property taxes, the lack of housing, the inefficient permitting processes, our failing infrastructure, and the underfunding of court services such as police and fire have made Duluth really hard and challenging right now. And that's why I've decided to step up and run for city council. Thanks so much.
Thank you. And our final opening statement comes from candidate Pacheco.
I'm Miranda Pacheco, running for Duluth City Council. They also call me Little Star Woman, and I am from the Bullhead Clan, and I am a Leech Lake Band member. So I came to Duluth, and I was homeless, and my kids were in the system, and I was in active addiction. Duluth literally saved my life. I began my career working at Chum, and I went on to work at ACO and Life House, and I'm now an alcohol and drug councillor. I graduated from the Fond du Lac Tribal and Community College, and I attend Saint Scholastica. I'm a first-time homebuyer, and I'm also a felon. And so when I was let off of probation, I decided that it would be a good time for me to run because I think that representation and lived experience matter. Some of the things that I care deeply about is housing, mental health care, livable wages, and the lead pipes. I also work with SOR in the Workforce Development Center and WISC, and this group called WISE, and we promote BIPOC recruiting in the workforce, and I've worked on that for three years. And so what's most important for me is working directly in the community with community members. Yeah.
Thank you, candidates. Now we'll share the questions that were solicited and submitted by the organizing committee and questions submitted to the League of Women Voters website. Each candidate will have one and a half minutes to respond. And the first question, we will begin with candidate Pacheco. First question is, what do you see as the greatest challenge to starting and/or growing a business in the city? And what should city government do to make it easier?
For business. You know, that's interesting. I think what comes to mind, first of all, is while I was out door knocking, there was this lady who told me her story of how she opened a business on First Street, and she had to close it due to, you know, the circumstances of downtown. And that really stuck with me because, like, she had a dream, right? She had a dream of owning her own business, and she couldn't make it. And I think just resources, resources, we do have empty buildings, we, I don't, you know, I don't really know. I know it's a challenge, and I know that we need more Black and Brown businesses. What are we going to do about that? And I guess for everybody. So, yeah, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Same question, then, to candidate Nephew.
Well, so I'm unique in that, that I have actually started my own business. Mine is not a brick-and-mortar shop, but I can say 20 years ago, when I was starting my business, the biggest challenge for me, or I should say there's two big challenges for me. Number one was probably childcare, and that's only gotten worse. So fostering more childcare in the area so you can have female business owners or business owners who maybe have children or small children or want to have children. I think that's important. Which brings me to, I did assist a client of mine in creating or finding a location and getting a childcare business up and running, and she used the City of Duluth 1200 Fund. And I think supporting things like that for the financial aspect of making sure businesses can get off the ground is really important. You know, funding for my business was a challenge as well, and I found a way to make that happen. And for us, it was a different sort of unique experience with support from people around me that I was able to do that. So I'd say childcare and funding. As far as downtown, I think there's great opportunities to do that, but in order to make this business viable and starting downtown, you need to make sure there's a captive audience, which I would lean on housing for that, to make sure some business startups down there would be viable. So make sure that they work in conjunction with each other, I think, would be my plans. Thank you.
Okay. The same question to candidate Forstman.
This is a great question and really gets to how do we grow our economy? And before we can grow, we have to retain what we have. So one of the things I'll highlight that I'm really proud of from my record is during COVID, before state and federal programs came in to help our small businesses, I pushed on the 1200 Fund, which is a board that I sit on, and we gave out $1.3 million in grants to over 130 businesses just to keep them alive. Because these are the coffee shops and the neighborhood businesses that our community depends on so much. But as we look forward, how do we get more entrepreneurs? I respect people like Lynn who have started their own business and stuck it out. So first of all, we need to listen to their experience. But beyond that, I'm pleased to serve on the Board of the Entrepreneur Fund, which is, I would call, the premier organization in our region that helps entrepreneurs with not only grant and loan funding, but technical assistance. And they've done a lot of great work around helping BIPOC businesses start up, and some of the things that they need access to is access to capital, even in spite of some of the traditional markers not necessarily being there. When you look at loan programs, we've also helped with procuring sites within buildings. We helped with the pop-up program that you saw downtown, which helped activate that space and gave away space for free so that they would have an opportunity to scale their business and to try to sell to new markets. And then workforce is a huge challenge, too, and we know that that's what keeps a lot of businesses up at night, is being able to find the people that they need to be able to run effectively. So working on all of those things is important as we look to the next four years for our economy.
Okay. And candidate Yekel.
Yeah, thank you. As a public health professional, I know that these questions of economic development and these conversations cannot happen in silos. We need to be talking about, we need to be talking about housing, affordable housing. We need to be talking about exploring increasing living wages here in Duluth. We need to be talking about childcare expansion. And we certainly, I'm very, very excited about the library redevelopment project downtown that will include workforce development, resources, and services for our community members. And certainly, when we talk about all of these things, we need to make sure that our city administration, our planning forces, our planning staff have what they need to make really good decisions. And we can be exploring options like mixed-use development in our downtown areas. Yeah, I'll end there. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And I'd like to follow up this question about growing a business and get a little bit more specific, and talk about how the city council can promote and support small business development in Duluth, especially by Black, Indigenous, and people of color. If you focus on that area. And we'll begin with candidate Yekel.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. I think the number-one thing that city councillors can be doing to support our Black and Brown community members, especially our entrepreneurs, is listening and making sure that the city is a good partner in those capital investments and continuing to carry on the public dialogue about what our BIPOC community leaders need. I know that Duluth has serious wealth and racial inequalities, and these disparities affect everything from employment opportunities to health to generational stability. And it is going to take not just city council members, it is going to take the administration, it is going to take relationships, deep, deep relationships in the community and across government bodies, across organizations, and across community leaders to work towards economic and racial justice. I think that we have really exciting opportunities now to be investing in community development projects with our state surplus, with our federal funding opportunities, to undo some of these really big systemic inequities. And I know that our community members have solutions, and we just need to listen and ensure that our BIPOC members have a seat at the table.
Thank you. And candidate Forstman, same question.
I touched on this a little bit already with the 1200 Fund, but let me explain what that is, because I've thrown, we've heard it a couple of times. The 1200 Fund is a nonprofit, but all of the board members are appointed by the mayor. It is a very unique organization that has a direct tie to the city. There's actually only two of these types of organizations in the entire state, one's in Duluth and one's in Two Harpers. And then the state legislature made them illegal after that in the 1980s. So we're very lucky to have it. We were grandfathered in. But what it does is it allows us to use funds very creatively in ways that government typically can't get involved. So that's where we've gotten the funding to do the BIPOC Business Directory. We've been able to do the pop-up program and partner with the downtown Duluth organization. And there's lots of other potential that we could do as we look to grow our entrepreneurship within our BIPOC community. And the STRIPE Program with the Entrepreneur Fund is one that partners with it. So we've got nonprofits in the area that are looking at adding capacity. What the council can do is make sure that the 1200 Fund has money in it. And we can also invest in our Duluth Economic Development Authority, because what it takes when a small business is looking up, getting up off the ground, they typically need to tap into pots of money from various organizations. So they'll get some here, some there, but they're not going to get all of it in one shot. So having enough in the 1200 Fund and the Duluth Economic Development Authority is a big start that helps match our private partners and gives us a seat at the table, actually, two seats at the table from the city of Duluth that we're lucky to have to help out these entrepreneurs.
Thank you. And candidate Pacheco.
Yeah, this is an interesting question. I've worked, like I said, with WISE for about three years now, and we're just barely diving in deep and talking about these issues. It's hard to talk about growth when we have, like, for Black and Brown people, we have, you know, trauma, addiction, you know, poverty, and those types of things. And so it's really, it's really hard to start thinking about, like, oh, hey, we want to run a business, you know, when we don't have money to pay the rent. And so I think I want to see, this is why I'm running, because I want to see equality in Duluth. I want to go and I want to buy products from another Brown person, and that's why I'm on the WISE workforce. We talk about the workforce, but there's another group, and there are a couple other, you know, Black-owned business owners there. I do have the resources. I could, we've talked about mentorship, we've talked about ways that are outside of the box, because that's what it's going to take. It's going to take outside of the box. We need to stop the gatekeeping. We're talking about, like, you know, banking and access to non-native and Black people is more easier than it is for us. And there's so many layers to that, and I think it would take, you know, community members that are actually passionate about that and know the issues.
Thank you. And let's hear from candidate Nephew.
Sure. So to grow BIPOC businesses, I would go back to my previous comment with the 1200 Fund, making sure that that's funded and supporting the growth of those businesses. But then also working closely with the nonprofits that do this every day. And how can we work better with our BIPOC communities in conjunction with those nonprofits in order to see those businesses grow? Downtown is probably the greatest opportunity to have some business growth right now with the storefronts. Support that with housing to make sure they're successful and there are a captive community to actually use the businesses and spend at the businesses would be what my goal would be. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Let's switch gears and go on to another topic, the city parks. Duluth voters rejected the Parks Maintenance Referendum last November. What specific actions will you take as a city councillor to ensure that Duluth parks receive adequate funding for both short-term maintenance and long-term resiliency? And this question goes first to candidate Nephew.
The city is putting some money towards parks right now. I forget the exact dollar amount. I'm sure Eric will let us know that. But parks are important, and I think some of it's going to be to educate the public on what parks can actually do for us. And when I talk about that, I say our kids and their opportunities. As a mom of four and two kids in college, my kids, because of parks and because of the recreational activities that are there, they were able to build that resume, so to speak, in order to get into college. The colleges that they want to show that they are well-rounded, children as far as moving forward in their future. So educating the public on what those parks actually have for offerings and all the different things that our Parks Department do. I mean, there's so many different varieties, whether it's not just about the playgrounds, it's not just about the trails, there's so much more that is there. And bringing out that to the community and what it can offer would then gain community support as far as funding our Parks Department.
Okay. And let's hear from candidate Pacheco on parks.
Well, parks, you know, I think about, you know, our future generations, my kids, our memories at parks when they were little and how much fun that they had. But it also, of course, goes deeper. It involves, you know, the people that work for the parks. We need to have livable wages, we need to promote people keeping their jobs. A lot of people come to Duluth because of our, you know, our landscapes, right? Like the lake walk and other things. And so I think going forward, keeping parks as an important topic for those reasons. We do have some COVID money coming in, and I would hope that we'd be able to, you know, add more money to parks.
Thank you. And let's hear from candidate Yekel on parks.
Gosh, growing up in Duluth and running across country, I have really, really fond memories of exploring our parks and our trail system. And access to parks is incredibly important for our community health. It improves our mental and physical health. It provides opportunities for, of course, like, physical activity and, you know, relationship building. And can, you know, having the abundant and really well-supported and maintained green space in our community certainly help with air quality and water quality. And I also know that the increased access to public green space is also linked to lower crime rates. So all of this is, like, very, very important. And how we pay, how we pay for our parks, how we continue to maintain the abundance of green space is vital. And that includes, solutions that can help us do that include stabilizing our property taxes and making sure that our tourism, our tourism taxes is actually reflective of the effects and impacts that tourism has on our parks, on our public, on our shared public infrastructure, and on our city services.
Thank you. And let's hear from candidate Forstman on parks.
I believe that our park system is really the heart and soul of the city. It's what brings people here, it's what keeps people here. I'm a T-ball coach. I know what poor condition a lot of our parks are in. And unfortunately, we're about $150 million in the hole in our park system. I think that vote last year said as much about the tax climate that we're in right now as the city, as it did how much people value parks. But clearly, we have to find solutions without relying on the property tax. And a couple of things that I would put forward, first of all, depending on when this airs, you're going to see at the next city council meeting, from the date that we're airing this, that we're going to be proposing to reallocate some of the money originally dedicated from the Cirrus sale of their building towards the broadband fund to instead go to our park system. $750,000 to our parks' capital, which is starving for resources. I've also asked the city administration to start phasing in our tourism tax to start paying ourselves back first. And what I mean by that is we, over the years, have come up with a system that tries to use metrics to allocate our tourism tax fairly, but unfortunately, we're not giving the city park system its fair share of that pot of money. And so over the course of the next couple of years, I'm hoping that we can start to cycle that. You don't want to do that overnight because that takes very good nonprofits and cuts their funding, but our park system is the reason that people are coming to town, and we have to make sure that we're at least keeping up with maintenance, and right now we're not.
Okay, thank you, everyone. We'll switch to another topic. And then- Okay, thank you, everyone. We'll switch to another topic, and that is housing. What innovative ideas do you have to encourage continued construction of new housing options with a focus on housing for low-income individuals? And let's begin this with candidate Forstman.
Housing is a money problem first and foremost. And so I am all in favor of streamlining our zoning code, making the rules less restrictive, allowing new types of housing to come up. Some of that's going to work, some of it's not. One of the examples of not working was the tiny home that everybody saw online. That doesn't mean that we don't keep trying innovative things, even if one idea doesn't stick. But at its core, we have to continue to find ways of promoting development and streamlining our, our city permitting process to make it easy to do housing in Duluth. We did nineteen million dollars from American Rescue Plan funds. A lot of that is still unspent because those projects haven't gotten other pieces of their funding from the state or other places to be able to go forward. And so I'm hoping that those projects will continue to come online. But when you look at still leveraging nineteen million dollars, that doesn't actually get you a whole heck of a lot. So how can we help fund it while also making the rules less restrictive while still maintaining standards that are going to keep everybody safe is a challenging problem. And as we look at deeply affordable housing, those are going to typically be your most heavily subsidized units. You're going to be looking at tax increment financing, tax abatement, et cetera. I've supported those in the past and will continue to do that. And I also believe we need to spread out our housing at all income levels across the city. And that's one of the reasons why I'm supportive of redeveloping a part of Lester Park Golf Course to be a mixed income community, because we only have so many places that we can do scale for housing as well. And all options have to be on the table if we're going to try to solve it.
Thank you. Let's go on to candidate Jaquel on housing.
Yeah, thank you so much for asking this question. This is the number one issue across Duluth that I am hearing when I'm meeting with folks on the doors, when I'm meeting with folks at neighborhood, at neighborhood meetings, when I'm just out in the community. Too many Duluthians are struggling to find or maintain quality housing right now. And I think that the city has tremendous opportunities to build more affordable housing, upgrade our existing housing stock, and do more for our community members that are facing homelessness. And I think, so some things that I certainly support are building more affordable housing options, I think with a special attention to the potential of building deeply affordable housing, supportive housing and public, and public housing, while incentivizing sustainable construction. And this can support our local union labor. And this can increase access to weatherization, electrification, renewable energy. And I also think that the city council has a responsibility to ask for transparency from developers. So ensuring that our decisions are made locally by the community and to use local union contractors. But I think that we can also be exploring policies that will support and protect renters. And we can be expanding support for first-time homeowners, as well as improving our, the quality of our existing housing stock through rehabilitation programs.
Okay, thank you. Let's hear from candidate Pacheco.
Yeah, the housing situation, we are in a crisis and we need to confront it. Obviously, like I said, from being homeless to a renter and now owning my own home. So I've experienced the housing crisis in Duluth from many angles. And that's like my number one thing on my platform, because I know how it, how important it is to have like a safe place to rest your head at night. If I didn't have that, like, I would not be sitting here. And so we have other community members that are still struggling. They're living in tents. And that's not right. And so what I'm most excited about is if I do have the opportunity to make an impact, I know we need affordable housing. We don't, we don't need more private housing. We need affordable housing. We need something that, like, for long-term, something more permanent for our residents. Being at Chum, I've seen little kids being homeless and experiencing that with their, their parents. And we just need to do something. And like I said, I'm super excited to, if I do get elected, seeing what I can do by, you know, talking to my team members and doing the research and coming up with new ideas, because I've been close to the problem, and I feel like I would have different solutions.
Okay, and let's hear from candidate nephew on new housing and low-income housing.
So housing, the city of Duluth did a Baker-Tilly study that talks about the issues within the city permitting process from the overlaps in departments. And I would divert to that first. It's actually a pretty good study. And it talks about a lot of the things that the contractors are complaining about as far as making it challenging to build in Duluth. So the first thing I would say is look at that study and let's make some changes. We have some great people within City Hall that really want to see development happen, and they may not even realize the overlaps that are there. So let's start there. As far as getting housing units online, I think that's where you could really work closely with the business community. Downtown has great opportunities, and I would say in the format of co-op housing. You can do rental, you can do condo, you can do co-op housing. So right now, we have just a few co-op housing units in the city. One of them, for example, is a fifty-five-plus co-op housing unit. It's called Gramercy Park. It sits up on Haynes Road, and they have like a five-year waiting list. That's not okay, but it also shows there's a demand for it and there's a want for it. And it's an affordable place for ownership. There's people who are stuck in multifamily properties and taking a spot for someone who's maybe moving out of a supportive housing unit and wants to go into more of a market rate or something like that. And we should give them an opportunity to buy, and that would be a good affordable place to start. The city should also sign on to a lot of these affordable housing projects. I know I'm part of a new startup where we're creating supportive housing for people who are leaving long-term incarceration, and more projects like that need to happen. That money usually comes from federal, county level, but the city just needs to be a good partner in that. And those would be different developments I would encourage. Thank you.
Okay, our next question zeroes in on some folks who don't have houses yet. What initiatives would you support to address the needs of vulnerable adults who are without shelter and lacking services and resources in our city? And we'll first begin with candidate nephew.
So I'll go back to the creating of supportive housing projects. And again, the city just needs to be a good partner on those, because the money doesn't come typically at a city level. It's usually federal, state, county-level funding that does that. But we need to be a partner. We need to sign on and agree with those projects. And they will often involve maybe a TIF. And I think TIF used in a correct way is a good economic development tool. And for housing, that would be a good one that's there. So I would encourage doing those sort of projects. There's some great supportive housing units in town that are really wildly successful, and we need to just encourage expansion and copying. If there's a model that works, don't reinvent the wheel. I'm a big believer in that. So that would be a good place that I would start, is encouraging and figuring out how we can support those nonprofits and support those housing projects to grow and become bigger and maybe work in different line items. So maybe they're doing alcohol right now, maybe they move to drug or mental health. So those would be the projects I would encourage.
Thank you. Let's move on to candidate Pacheco.
Yeah, this, this topic is really close to home. I'm an alcohol and drug counselor, and a lot of the women that I work with, there's not many options in Duluth. And sometimes I have to, their after-care plan involves sending them home in the same environment that they became sick, right? And so they're going right back to alcohol and drug use with no other options. And I think I, ideally, you know, I know it's a money thing, but like, I would love to see sober, sober beds and mental health beds available, so that people can have a chance. And that would involve like case management, maybe, you know, like skills, showing how to, you know, how do you go get an ID? How do you go, you know, so some, some maybe peer recovery specialists, something, just community care, because that's what we need. But also, it's also really important to acknowledge that some people that are homeless or experiencing homelessness right now, they want to be, right? And so what space are we going to make for them in Duluth where it, it's less of an impact and where it's okay for all community members, that we can live safely together, right? So yeah, that's.
Okay, thank you. Candidate Forstman.
It's a hugely important issue and one that I'm proud that I've supported in my time on the council. So before I started on the council, working with other colleagues, and I'm going to give Noah Hobbs a lot of credit on this one, the Warming Center didn't exist. So I think it's important to recognize that we've come a long way. We've lengthened the hours that's available in the coldest months of the year. And we also know it's not nearly enough. And that's why I'm proud to support the stepping on up plan. Back to that funding that I talked about from Cerus, another portion that we're going to be proposing to allocate is money that can help match our county to help get a transitional housing project up off the ground that will encourage folks to camp less in tents and have a safe space modeled after certain places down in the Twin Cities. So we're going to try to bring those lessons learned, that a bunch of us went on a bus and toured about a year and a half ago to bring that back to town and help give people more options to be safe. My wife is a high school counselor Duluth East, and I know that hidden homelessness is a big issue too, especially among our youth. So it's not as simple as saying, okay, build one thing and it's solved. That's not it. We have to partner with the county, with the state, and other resources as well to try to help provide funding, spaces, opportunities, options for people who are experiencing it. Because a tent is not okay, and we need to keep doing better. But I think that we've come a long way already, and I'm really proud of things like funding more street outreach downtown, which was something that we put in place a couple of years ago. And I believe that we'll have some good things to talk about four years from now as well.
Thank you. And let's hear from candidate Jaquel.
Yeah, thank you. This is a really, really important topic to be discussing. And I think that we should all be deeply concerned about the housing crisis here in Duluth and about the number of folks who are, who are living in tents outside, who, who don't have a safe place to rest their head at night. I'm sorry, I'm nervous. Let me take a moment. I know that the city of Duluth can be a better partner in expanding temporary and permanent housing options for community members facing homelessness. I know that the city of Duluth can be a better partner in supporting supportive housing options, housing options with services built in, with community built in. I'm really excited about the potential of the settled program that our faith organizations are exploring right now in Duluth. But I also think that, that city, that the city council, that the administration, that all of our government bodies can be having conversations about our policies to support anti-displacement, to be more respectful of those who are, who are living on the streets, who are living in tents, to be more supportive of our community crisis response program, so that folks living in addiction, in homelessness, in crisis have folks to go to and that are, that are met with compassion.
Thank you. We'll switch gears here a little bit and talk about public and private services. What is your position on privatizing currently funded services within the Duluth governmental budget and structure? For example, libraries, utilities, parks. Let's go first to candidate Jaquel.
Yeah. This is, this is a topic that is new-ish, new-ish to me. I know that I support our, that I will continue to support our public workforce. And I also know that privatizing, that contracting out to third-party organizations and companies often lead to more long-term, lead to long-term increased costs for taxpayers. So in that sense, I, I am, I am opposed and will continue to be a strong ally and advocate for our public workforce.
Thank you. Candidate Forstman on privatization.
This is a question that gets asked by most of the unions who represent workers at City Hall that weigh in on endorsements. And so far, three have weighed in, fire police, and APSME, and all three have endorsed my campaign. I think it's really important to recognize that we have to have a balance. There's things right now that we contract out that can continue to be, but we should not be contracting out core city services. And we should not be contracting out the public services that our folks depend on. So when it comes to making sure our police and fire crews are fully staffed, we need to do that. When it comes to making sure that we have enough people on the road to plow snow and to maintain our roads in the summer and to patch potholes, that's all important. And also, our city utilities are very important to keep on the public side of things, because not only do they provide high-quality services to our residents, but they also fuel our bottom line as a city. And for instance, Comfort Systems, our water and gas utility provides anywhere from three to five million dollars a year to the bottom line that helps subsidize all other city operations. And so I'm in favor of the balance that we've struck right now. And if there were proposals to deviate from that, I would not be in favor of those.
Okay. Candidate nephew on privatization.
For the most part, I am not supportive of privatizing, particularly like our parks and libraries. The danger with privatizing that would be making them not accessible for all. And those are really important spaces for everyone within the community. As far as public servants go, maintaining those jobs within City Hall also makes sure that there are good-paying union jobs. There are certain things that are really unique questions or services that you need that just don't make sense for it to be a long-term job, that it's just something is for now, and it's a quick question. And those should be things that are privatized out. But they're usually short-term contracts. The men and women who work for government are civil servants. Their jobs are not ones that are often given the credit that they deserve to have, being part of those places. I'm married to a public servant. He's not city, he's county, but same sort of concept. Those jobs need to stay within the city, and they need to be accessible. So no, privatizing those things isn't a good idea. And Comfort Systems, as far as our natural gas utility, it is a moneymaker for the city. It's really important. It's also a place where a lot of our citizens can get their utility service maintained from people who aren't there to sell you something. They're there to just make sure that you have a safe appliance within your house. I think those are good things, and they should stay as public opportunities. Thanks.
Okay. And candidate Pacheco.
Yeah, I would, I would say like, I'm against privatization. This is also a topic I would really like to, well, I'm going to learn more about. As far as contracts, I really like the idea of keeping jobs local, because they keep the wages in the community. And so this, I mean, I support unions. I mean, I'm not, I'm endorsed by SEIU, but I have met and talked with other union members. I really like the idea of workers feeling empowered to stand up against, you know, stand up for fair wages and their rights. And so I'm super for that. Also, making sure that jobs get done, so keeping things local. I also really like the feeling of keeping relationships home in our community.
Okay, thank you. Last question from me. What do you see as the main environmental issue facing Duluth? And what is your plan to address it? And candidate Pacheco would be first.
Well, this is a loaded question. So when I started this campaign, it was to protect the water. My dream is for our, our future generations, right? And so my kids and then their kids. And so I think for me, one of the biggest things is protecting water and our land. I am Ojibwe, like, I come from this land. My ancestors come from this land. And so we need to be good stewards by promoting green space, by promoting, you know, all things that, that ruin our land, right? And so we live in this beautiful city that's right next to the largest body in the world of freshwater, right? And so what are the things that we can do to protect it? And that is something I'm going to stand on. And so what are the things that we can do to protect it? And that is something I'm going to stand on, um, if I do get elected. Um, yeah.
Thank you. Uh, candidate nephew, environment.
PFOS. PFOS are forever chemicals. Um, they're found in Lake Superior. Um, Lake Superior fish, um, are not necessarily the safest to eat. Um, and these are chemicals that are coming from everything. They're coming from runoff. They're coming from our clothing, the waterproofing that you may have in your jacket. It's a PFOS. It's a chemical. And, um, that is something that they're finding in Lake Superior and it can affect the health of all of us. Um, our children can affect their fertility. It can affect your endocrine system. It can be the result of some cancers. And I think that's the number one thing. Right now they are not filtering for PFOS down at WLSSD. I know that that's a separate entity. Um, but we do have a couple of seats at the board there. Um, we have seats at the table. And we should use those in order to make sure that our water is properly filtered and we're keeping those chemicals out of Lake Superior. Um, that would be my number one environmental issue.
Thank you. And candidate Jaikle.
Yeah, um, I think the city of Duluth has gotten a lot of attention recently, um, kind of being touted or pegged as a climate refuge city. Um, and no, no city is, um, is, is safe from, from climate change. Um, and I do believe that it is past time for the city of Duluth to take bold action on the climate crisis. Um, certainly the city's climate action plan is a really, really important step. Um, but we can be doing more to support our whole community, um, by stopping the worst effects of, of climate change. Um, federal funding from the Infrastructure and Jobs Act and the Inflation Reduction Act will provide so many opportunities for the city of Duluth to lead the way on climate, um, while uplifting our most vulnerable community members. Um, and some opportunities that I see, um, city council in, um, in taking action on this and supporting are getting solar arrays on our public buildings, um, expanding urban canopy by planting trees, especially in high-density neighborhoods. Um, and supporting incentives for local businesses and career pathways for green jobs. Um, this can include retrofitting, energy efficiencies, solar manufacturing and installation, heating and cooling, um, producing sustainable building materials. There's, there's so much potential for green industry here in Duluth, um, while we take care of, of our community members.
Thank you. And candidate Forstman on the environment.
When I think about the environmental question, the first thing I would think of are things that impact human health and that are front and center. And so PFOS, as candidate nephew talked about, is a great one. I think about our lead pipe issue as another, uh, which we'd make great strides on, but need to continue to get out so that nobody has to worry about whether their drinking water has lead contamination in it within the city of Duluth. As far as the, the broader climate and making sure that our green spaces, we've already talked about are protected, I was happy to be part of establishing the framework for the Climate Action Work Plan on the council. The city is blessed to have a very talented sustainability officer in Mindy Granley, who generates much more in grants and other income sources, uh, that she's worked on to the city than it would cost to fund her and her office. And that I know she's out after all of the federal grants that are available right now. And one of the projects that I know is being worked on and I'm supportive of is getting a backup power source at our water plant to make sure that in the event of a broad-scale outage, we make sure that nobody goes without water, um, for any amount of time. So there's enormous opportunities to help tap into those funds. I think we also have to balance the role of city government and making sure that we're taking care of city services and the things that people depend on us. But I think with Mindy's work, we've shown we can do both and I would continue to be supportive of that.
Thank you all. At this time, we'll ask each candidate to give a two-minute closing statement. And we will begin with candidate Forstman.
Well, thank you again. This is always a lovely opportunity to be with you all and, um, you know, there's a lot we talked about today and a lot that we didn't talk about. One of the things we didn't talk about is that we are facing structural deficits at the city, even after we got a large, uh, local government aid increase from the state. And that makes funding anything challenging over the long term. And so to be able to fix those structural problems, I think is going to take some really hard choices and some partnerships. And I'm somebody who in my time on the council has proven that I can work across different groups and different, um, entities to try to bring together solutions. So if we're able to do that and do that really hard work, and I would point to our employee healthcare plan as the number one example for that, I believe that we will have more resources to put in more money for streets and infrastructure across the city to fully staff our snowplow crews, our road maintenance, our police and fire, like I talked about, to invest in our parks, to do all of these things that everybody wants to see us do. I want to do them too. But it's the role of the council to be a check and a balance on not just saying yes to everything, but being really thoughtful and diligent and also challenging our mayor's office. And that's something that I've done where I've collaborated with our mayor, I've challenged our mayor, and no matter who wins in that election, as the person who would return with the most seniority on our city council, I would continue to do that with my city council colleagues to make sure that we're going in the right direction that our citizens want us to. So really proud to be labor endorsed. I've got fifteen different labor organizations and their members who decided to support my campaign. That means a lot to me because these are people, especially the three at city hall, who are most impacted by these choices. And after five years of having some really hard choices to make and going through two years of COVID in between, um, I think to come out on the other end and still have their trust and respect says a lot. So I'm looking forward to the election in November. Uh, looking forward to seeing many of you out there on the campaign trail. And I hope that you all go out and vote no matter who it is for. Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll have a closing statement from candidate Jaikle.
Thank you. Thank you so much, um, to the League of Women Voters and to PACT TV for this opportunity and for the conversation. Um, and thank you for everyone who is watching and listening. We need a city that works for everyone. Everyday Duluthians have the solutions to the issues that we face. And I know this because I've worked with a number of communities, organizations and leaders to improve our city by partnering with a grassroots group of citizens to make getting around Duluth safer for everyone, working with organizations protecting us from unfair utility rate increases and, and helping my neighbors test their water for lead. I have also lived what so many Duluthians face. I have had to check my bank account before buying groceries and refilling prescriptions. I've juggled multiple low-wage jobs. I have experienced Duluth's housing crisis. And I know as a community that we have the answers. I will work, I will work to make sure that what Duluthians need are at the heart of public policy decisions and that the community is most impacted by a decision at city hall or at the table. I will show up for all Duluthians. I do that now and I will continue to do that as a city councillor. The cities, the decisions that we make now on how to allocate and implement this historic funding for local governments will have generational impacts. And I'm committed to working across our city to build a better Duluth for our whole community. Again, my name is Johnny Jaikle and it is my honor to ask for your support in the general election in November. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And let's hear a closing statement from candidate Pacheco.
Um, yeah, thanks for having me, um, today. Um, I think that I just want to point out, um, although this is not my strongest point sitting in front of a video, my strongest point has been, um, talking to all community members from Gary to Woodland to Lakeside. And, um, just these conversations that just energize me. Um, I love community and I love hearing from people. Um, I love, they have solutions. We share stories. Um, sometimes they're funny and sometimes, you know what? Maybe that's all we need is a little bit of laughter because guess what? Like we have problems. We're a city. But we also, um, all share one thing and that's we love Duluth, right? And we just, we want to see something better and it's not going to change overnight. Absolutely not. But, um, we can share this space together. And, um, so that's been my, my strongest point. I loved, um, that, I love that part of, um, my campaign so far. And so I think, um, that has shown me that going forward, um, if I am elected, like I will be a familiar face for people. Um, people can count on me. I love helping. I, I really look forward to being like, um, serving the public, you know? Everyday people like myself. Um, I have been, um, endorsed by local organizations, DFL, DSA, Duluth for Clean Water, Environmental Caucus, Progressive, um, DFL. Um, also by local leaders, um, who I have really enjoyed, um, 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 building a relationship with, um, like Liz Olson, Azreen, Owl and Jen McEwen. Um, and so this has been the funnest, um, part. And, um, I'm a hard worker, like I know, you know, I'm trying to keep it light, but like I know my abilities to dig in, dig in deep. Um, my work that I do, um, is ethical and also, um, it's solution-based because I like to see results. And so, yeah, thanks for having me.
Thank you. And let's hear a closing statement from candidate nephew.
Again, thank you to the League of Women Voters for putting this on. Um, it's a great service to the public, um, hearing from us today. So the number one job of a city councillor is the budget. It's not exciting, but that's what it is. It's making sure services from the city are funded. Um, generating money. I mean, the city of Duluth doesn't have a lot of it. And that means we need to find ways to generate more, which is economic development. And I would argue that economic development currently is not feasible due to the fact that we're lacking housing units. Business expansion is not possible. I know in my business, I have a couple of year backlog of, um, buyers who love to buy, people who'd like to relocate here, um, but they can't because there's nothing to buy. There's no place to find. So we need to get those housing units online, which means we need to streamline and simplify our permitting process. We need to make it a place where home builders are eager to build. We need to get those housing units online, whether or not it is a supportive housing unit, all the way up to a million dollars. We need everything right now. We're lacking it all. So we need to find ways to do that. Once you're getting housing units online, you can actually do economic development. You can bring more money into the city, which is really important so that we have more money coming in. And we can do things like invest in our streets or roads. We can invest in our parks and we can give more opportunities for our kids, whether or not it's a baseball field, a soccer field, um, or a place where they can just play on a playground and go on a slide. I think that's important. Um, when we reprioritize the money within the city budget, we can expand our tax base. Um, we can also return to being a city of the first class, a true city of over a hundred thousand. We have the infrastructure for that and we need to do that. Um, right now we're maintaining streets and roads that are for a much larger city. We don't have the population to support that. So that means getting those things online so we can actually take the burden off of all the other homeowners that are out there. I'm Lynn Marie Nephew, one of the at-large candidates. I'm labor endorsed, which has been a great honor. I think I have about fifteen labor endorsements as well. Um, many of them coming from the city services. So I look for your support. Get out there and vote. It's really important. You all have a voice. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. This concludes this candidate forum for the two Duluth City Council at-large seats. It's our purpose in sponsoring meetings such as this to provide you with an opportunity to hear candidates discuss the issues that are important to you. There's never enough time to cover all of the issues in a limited time setting such as this. If your questions were not addressed, you should feel free to contact the candidates directly or you can dial vote four-one-one. We hope this program has helped you learn more about the candidates and the issues so that you can make informed choices at the polls on Tuesday, November seventh. We thank the candidates for their participation and PACT TV for making this event possible. This forum was also partially funded by a grant from the League of Women Voters Education Fund twenty-twenty-three, People Who Are Formerly or Currently Incarcerated Voter Registration Project. PACT TV will carry this forum and others. Check their listing for a schedule of times. Links to these forums will also be on the League of Women Voters of Duluth website. Thank you, everyone.